We'll have a quick 10-second countdown and then we'll get underway. All right, I will officially call the December 11, 2019 work session of the Town Board to order. I'll let the ministry reflect that all the board members are here. We have a number of staff and we have a very large audience tonight, so welcome to everyone that is here for various reasons. However, monthly reports are essentially updated, so nothing new to report on that at this point. We have no public hearings this evening. We do have two sets of guests and our first guest...
Minutes?
Oh, sorry. Thank you very much. So, I'm just excited and ready for you guys to make your presentation. I got ahead of my agenda. We do have the November 13, 2019 minutes before us and I would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any discussion on those minutes? Okay, seeing no discussion, those in favor of approving those minutes? Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes. The minutes are accepted. Thank you. Lisa. Now, I will move on to our guests. We have a student presentation about community choice aggregation. We have a number of folks here from Bay Trail, I'm guessing all Bay Trail. I see my friend Marissa, who has been here and spent time with our Energy and Environmental Advisory Committee. And so with that, ladies and gentlemen, I'll ask you to, whatever form, fashion that you like, either please come to the table or however you want to start. And it would be great to introduce yourselves so that we know who you are and then you can get right into your presentation. So, welcome.
Thank you. I think we're all just gonna... We'll introduce ourselves as we each go.
That is perfect. That is perfect. And you can stand if you're more comfortable to do that, you can sit if you'd like to do that, whatever you're most comfortable with.
Hi, I'm Anna Yato, a freshman at Penfield High School and a member of my school's environmental club. Over the past several decades, the Penfield Town legislators have taken many steps to lessen our community's carbon footprint and their efforts do not go unnoticed. During the 1980s, an energy management system was established. In the 1990s, a storm water management plan was put into action. More recently, electronic recycling events, education of students at the town's elementary and middle schools, and solar-powered energy have come to the attention of our town. Just a few days ago, an article was published by Rochester First News applauding Penfield for their great reduction of energy costs for their residents through the use of their solar farm, which has 3,648 solar modules. The power generated by the solar farm has the potential to power around 120 homes yearly. On behalf of the Penfield High School Environmental Club, I express much gratitude for all that our legislators have accomplished in making our community more green and all that they will continue to do in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Caroline Cutter and I am a freshman and part of the environmental club at Penfield High School. So, climate change. The earth is dying already and I'm only 14. I would like to one day hopefully raise kids and be a grandparent, but that will not happen if we do not take action and make the change to save our planet. I have been noticing many things since I was a little girl, mostly warmer summers and winters or more intense storms. I am also a downhill skier and I have noticed many new snowfall patterns, such as a ton of snow one year and little snow the next. I noticed extreme heat waves in the summer and big windstorms the next week. We don't have another planet for us to move to or for us to take refuge on. I don't want to have to tell my kids one day that we're all going to die of climate change if we even make it that long. I don't want to have to suffer with fossil fuels polluting my lungs, polluting our lungs, or polluting the lungs of our future generations. The earth needs to last for much longer. My friends and I have been going to strikes and rallies for the climate because people need to see that this is something that I really care about and the community cares about it too. We are acting, but not fast enough. The climate crisis is real. My feelings about this are real. So, we all need to make the change because I can't do this alone and we can't do this alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bee Reichman. I'm a freshman at Penfield High School and like my peers, I too see firsthand the devastating effects of climate change. And as a cross-country runner, I've noticed how the environment has changed in the last few years. When I first started running, our October races were a crisp 65 degrees. Remember that? Yeah, well, this past season, however, the beginning of October was 80 degrees and by the end of the month, it was snowing. We even had a race nearly canceled because of the temperature exceeding the rule set by New York State. This changing weather isn't some coincidence. Most scientists agree that climate change is directly affecting our seasons in a major way. It has been cold when it isn't supposed to be, swelteringly hot at the wrong times, and record winds, rain, and snow have absolutely demolished local businesses, homes, and crops. This is not how the world was meant to be and we all know that it will only get worse from here. This is a critical moment in our history and it all starts with Penfield. If we can see changes this drastic in our small town, imagine the immense change we can see globally. This isn't some outside issue. This is an issue happening to us now. Even though the changes we are seeing in our town are small, they will soon pile up into one much bigger crisis. We can either act and prevent future harm to our precious environment from Harris Whalen Park to Ellison Sleding Hill, or we can table this negotiation further. The choice is yours, but we don't know what our future will look like if we don't take action now. Community choice aggregation is something we, the people, want. It's going to drive down energy costs across Penfield, keeping more money in the pockets of citizens. More money, less environmental destruction, and it's a win-win. By voting on this bill, you will be part of the movement to preserve our environment through cost-effective solutions, protecting Penfield for years to come. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Great job.
My name is Marissa Zwick and I'm a freshman at Penfield High School and I'm also a member of the Penfield High School Environmental Club, Energy and Environmental Advisory Committee, Rochester Youth Climate Leaders, and I'm a liaison to drawdown. The issues that could be reversed through using the community choice aggregation don't only affect us personally here in Penfield, but the whole state, nation, and even worldwide. Climate change is a global problem that's looming over everyone's head, yet the people of our world are continuing to pollute and ruin our earth. The entire world's at risk of dying from climate change with colder winters, hotter summers, and snow, rain, and storms much more intense and frequent than usual. On top of our changing climate, the CCA also addresses the cost of the fuel and the source of the fuel. Not only do fossil fuels add to global warming, but they're also a non-renewable resource and will run out soon at the rate that we're using them. Penfield, like many other local towns now, can be one of the trailblazers in the implementation of the CCA program and can pave the path for others to follow until this program is so widely spread that it can change the world. There are trillions of youth in this world just like me that are fighting for their right to change the way our globe is being run and to change our currently inevitable path to destruction. I thank you so much for your time and attention and I know you'll make a wise decision.
Thank you. And Marissa, when did you get to be a freshman? It seems like I knew you back when you were a fourth grader, just last year.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Marissa. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anna Gutman and I'm a freshman at Penfield High School. This world is beautiful, unique, and special. It has given us many gifts and it gave life to us and the ones we love. We have done a lot to give back, but we could do more. The use of fossil fuels are harmful to us and our planet. There is only one earth. One day, we will pass this world down to our kids and so on. Let's not let them take our burden and the burdens of the past. We can do so much more for our present and the future, for the people we love and things we admire. We must take action. We must be our own heroes. Albert Einstein once said, "The world will not be destroyed by those who do evil, but by those who watch them and do nothing." This is why I think we should take action. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Quinlan Blatt and I'm in 7th grade at the Bay Trail Middle School. All my life, I've been told by my parents that I can be whoever I want to be. This whole generation has been raised with that feeling of control and freedom, but with the increasingly alarming climate problems threatening our planet, these freedoms seem less and less real. Without a healthy climate, many of the dream jobs my friends wait for will be unreachable. My own dream of becoming an author will be impossible if our climate state continues to worsen, but I know that Penfield can change that. If we begin to turn towards a healthy climate now, we can save our earth together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming in.
Hi, my name is Anna Sarah Saletti and I'm a sophomore at Penfield High School. I am also a member of the Penfield High School Environmental Club. Additionally, I'm a member of the Rochester Youth Climate Leaders, a climate action advocacy group, and a coalition of Rochester area youth environmental organizations. I want to thank all of my fellow students who have spoken before me tonight and specifically reference what Anna Yato spoke to at the beginning. As Anna mentioned, Penfield has already done so much in this field. We should be incredibly proud of what we've already accomplished with our solar fields and push towards renewable energy. Because I know we are capable of such changes, I urge you to pass the Enabling Law for Community Choice Aggregation. Tonight, we are advocating for implementing community choice aggregation in Penfield. I understand that you know about community choice aggregation. You know that community choice aggregation is the practice of buying energy in bulk to supply clean and renewable energy to the entirety of a specific town. You know that all energy customers in the town are automatically participants, but with the option to opt out. You know that since the energy is bought in bulk, energy costs are driven down. Passing CCA has precedent in Brighton, Pittsford, and Rondiquay in the Village of Pittsford. Their CCA plan has been approved and is in the works. In fact, the city of Rochester just passed the Enabling Legislation I urge you to pass tonight. CCA has to be the future in Penfield, Monroe County, and New York State. We've already heard multiple stories tonight of how the climate crisis is affecting students in their everyday lives. We need to protect our future. The clean energy that CCA will provide will secure my future and my children's future. It is your public duty as elected officials to listen to the voices of the people, especially that of the youth who cannot vote. We are the youth and we are asking you to pass the Enabling Law for CCA. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Sadie Caraway and I'm a sophomore at Penfield High School. And on behalf of all of the Environmental Club and I'm sure everybody here, we just want to thank you all so much for your time and effort. We appreciate all that you guys do for this community and hearing our voices in this matter. It is important to us because we are the youth of this community and we want the best for our future as a whole community and for the future of generations to come. We hope that you consider the great potential of community choice aggregation, as many other communities have benefited from this in the past. We have collected signatures from the members of our community that's voiced community choice aggregation as a club in total, so we have these right here.
Right. And is this something we can keep?
Yes.
Okay. So, what we'll do is we'll make sure that all copies go to all the Town Board members so they have them. So, I'm going to ask our clerk to have copies made and do you need the original back?
I'm sure actually it would be pretty nice if we just had one back, but it's not necessary.
We'll make sure that we get you the original. We'll get that copy for the board.
Okay. Thank you so much. So, thank you again for this opportunity and hearing our voices as a club and I just want you all to have a great night. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Haley Wart and I'm a senior here at Penfield High School. Firstly, I'd just like to ask if you have any questions for us, any questions I don't know I could direct towards my fellow environmental club members.
Okay. So, I'll ask the board, any questions at this time? Okay. I'm going to talk about some next steps, but please continue with your presentation.
All right. Well, since there are no questions, we actually have some to ask you.
Okay.
When will the board be voting regarding the CCA decision and when would that decision be made public?
So, what I was going to say in my next comments about next steps is that the board actually asked our EEAC, our Energy and Environmental Advisory Committee, to do some late work for us to kind of vet this out and we've been doing that. We have drafted some, we do have a draft of the legislation, the enabling legislation. We have met with a number of different groups. Most recently, we will be meeting with Good Energy next week. Good Energy is a potential administrator of the program and we believe that it's a group that we need to have some conversations with. And as was directed by the board, we'll be looking for the feedback back from our EEAC. I would anticipate that probably by the end of the first quarter, we'll have that information back. This board has taken the approach of making sure we've vetted everything out. I know the towns of Pittsford, Brighton, Rondiquay, and the Village of Pittsford have just recently selected their administrators, so we have been learning from them and speaking with those supervisors as well so that we don't reinvent the wheel on things. And we'll be looking to have the EEAC come back and do a presentation to this board probably by first quarter of 2020.
Thank you so much for your time.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Is that any other, that's the, okay, great. So, what I would encourage certainly is that Marissa does receive our communications as part of the EEAC overall, so that's an avenue to stay connected. We do publish our agendas online so that you know when we'll be talking about that. I would encourage any of you or your spokesperson to reach out to my office at any time for an update if you want to do that, or email. Email's a great way to do it. You can submit an email to me and I can respond back to that email and then you can distribute it not only to your club, but also your other members as well. So, I would encourage that as an avenue to do if you'd like to pursue that. Okay?
Thank you.
Great. Great. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your energy around this topic. This is something that this Town Board has taken very seriously as you described in your presentation as we started to take a look at a number of things. We have tried to lead the way on many fronts with our solar programs. We do have three different solar programs that we've got in place today. Our biggest one down by DPW. We have and are getting ready to install our fourth electric car charging station in the Four Corners to do that. And again, working on the legislations for the CCA is another component of that. So, again, thank you for your time. Thank you for your interest and energy around this topic.
Thank you so much.
All right. Very good. Okay, we're going to continue on with our agenda. You're certainly welcome to stay, but I'm guessing there might be some homework and some other things. And the rest of the meeting may not be quite as exciting as what you presented to us, but again, you're welcome to stay. We'll give you an opportunity if you want to just take 30 seconds to slip out, we'll let you do that, and then we'll continue on with our agenda. Great job. Great job, guys. Okay, we will continue on and the next item on our agenda under guests, we have Rudy Neufeld. This is a potential use, an improvement of town-owned land at Autumn Oak Circle. And I'll ask our town engineer, Mark Valentine, maybe to give us an initial kickoff.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. So, Mr. Neufeld is here this evening. He has an option to buy some property on Jackson Road. That property was a former Christmas tree farm. And in some of the initial conversations, and I say this is first blush, it has not even been before the planning board yet, so we're not looking at the development of the lots, the layout, all that part of it. But as we started talking about storm waters and other things, our conversations centered around, we've got an existing stormwater facility off of Jackson Road on Autumn Oak Circle that sits on town property. Would it make sense for his future development stormwater pond to marry with that so at the end of the day, we end up owning one stormwater pond versus two? Could there be some betterment to improve that pond, bring it up to current standards? As we go through and we have to dredge out ponds and everything else, some of that could fall to him to do the upgrades, bring it to our current standards, and then marry his future drainage in with that. So, this evening is the discussion about, you know, is the board comfortable with him utilizing town property due to some of those things? He would need to access through town property for sanitary sewer. Ultimately, he would need to discharge to that pond as it's the lowest area in the region anyway with his stormwater pipes. So, he would need access to drain through the property to get to that, but just the conversation about putting the pond there. This is a sketch design, haven't gotten too far into it. The layout, the planning board has not even seen yet, so that has not come before the board. So, just trying to see, is the board comfortable of using that for a pond area? Some initial conversation. If the answer is no, obviously he'll incorporate it on his own property and make it happen. If the answer is yes, at least it gives him some direction and then he'll ultimately come back to this board sometime in the future once he gets his design out.
It'd be nice to have it before the planning board first. It seems, well, before the...
One and the other. I mean, just to give him a little direction, if there's any thought of it, great. If the answer is no, out of the box, then that kind of sets his direction. But obviously, there's more detail that he'd come back to this board, so it's not a final decision tonight to say, yes, we agree with this.
My first question is, when has this been done in the town before? Can you give us an example?
We do have regional ponds in other locations.
In terms of the, of using town-owned?
We have a regional pond at Plank Road. So, that picks up Crown Point, drains into part of that, as well as Wyndham Woods drains into part of that. So, that was a joint effort that was on town property. We acquired the property and then two other developments implemented their stormwater treatment in that area, which the town deemed to be a betterment, to have one regional pond itself, some existing drainage issues that we had in the area. So, that's the one instance. I'm aware of it. We may have done it in other locations, but that's...
Have you talked about it at PRC, though?
We talked about it at PRC today. He came into PRC, you know, we talked about some of the other logistics of the layout and the site and stuff with it. We do know we do own and maintain that area. The residents in that area do use the property for, you know, field areas and kids play on it and everything else. So, you know, we wanted to see in order of magnitude of how big may this pond be, you know, what portion of it may occupy the property, the entire piece, a small portion of it. Obviously, the residents utilize that and enjoy it. It's not a park, but it's just kind of, you know, there is an existing pond there today, though. So, it's kind of hard to see, but in this corner here, Penn's not working, up at the top right by Autumn Oak, there is an existing pond. You can kind of see it's overgrown now. Part of what our thoughts is, is have Mr. Neufeld go in there, clean that out, bring it back to its original condition, and actually look to improve that and bring it up to current standards. So, there is a stormwater pond there now, so it's not a brand-new element coming into that. It's kind of hard to see.
It's hard to see. Yeah, so this existing, there's existing one, then the other two sketches are proposed?
Yes.
Okay. And those are proposed completely on what's vacant town land right now?
Yeah. So, I kind of circled what the existing pond area is now and then he's showing some potential. And again, this is just kind of for size and purposes of what...
And if those ponds were not to be placed on that land, they would have to go on Mr. Neufeld's land.
Yep.
So, my concern then is that while this may seem to be convenient or something that's possible, by placing the stormwater retention areas and ponds off of the developer's land, that conveniently enables more units to be placed in here.
And that was part of PRC's conversation today was looking at doing...
And I don't think that that's the role of the town to facilitate more units jammed into a development by putting ponds on town land that is used by residents. No, I guess it's like the benefit, this might be a benefit for him, but what's the benefit to the town to have the ponds on the town property?
Just back, I'll ask, can I answer the first part first? So, that was part of the conversation at PRC today was typically as they come before the planning board, at this point, you show a conventional layout. So, part of our conversation was, and I'll just mark on here, you know, is have the developer come in, propose his layout showing, we'd call it conventional layout, so show he can fully accommodate his own ponds on his own property, so he's not gaining additional lots by putting it on our land, so whether he loses two, three, whatever, lots from that. But then if it's relocated, you know, you keep whatever that number is X, and then if he does relocate the pond onto our property for it, the lots may just get larger, that becomes a green space or something else. The pond wouldn't be there, but he wouldn't garner any more lots off of that. So, that was some of the PRC discussion today and I'm sure the discussion the planning board's going to have is to show how you can fully develop your parcel standalone. It's got to stand on its own merits, meet the stormwater regulations, everything else. Once you show that it can meet that with the pond, if you so happen to, you know, expand our pond and add a little portion onto it, you can make that green space, you can incorporate into the lots, but it'd still remain at X, you don't get X plus three or whatever that ends. So, the potential benefit of the town is, you know, as we've done, we take on these ponds and ownership. So, we've got one pond today. We'd obviously have two ponds in the future. So, one is to keep it as one pond. If he adds onto that pond, you know, we'd look to incorporate it and so we'd have one pond, one control structure, so that's less for us to own and maintain. The other piece we've talked to him about is running a deeper storm sewer across the street towards Jackson Road. We've had some longstanding issues on the west side of Jackson Road. There's always been some ponding water over there. We've looked at different options with those property owners of where we could drain that water too. We've looked at easements off the backside, other locations. There's really not a spot to go. So, if he could run a deeper storm sewer up through his property, stub it at the road at 70 feet deep, then it gives an opportunity for the neighbors on the other side to potentially come under the road and then, you know, solve some of their drainage issues with that. So, obviously this is...
How long have those drainage issues existed, Mark? Roughly?
I mean, as long as I can remember, you know, there's a nice white house that kind of sits up there. That side yard pretty much fills with water every year. The house next door has the septic system in the backyard, so we often get calls that obviously it's impacting the septic, they're having drainage issues with it. We've looked at, you know, possibility, where can you take the water to? And they're kind of just in a little bit of a bowl that it really has no other spot to go than potentially this way if we bring in a deeper sewer. We looked at the neighborhood to the west. They would have had to get some easements from existing residences. Those residences weren't supportive of doing that or granting those locations. So, as of right now, you know, we haven't been able to provide an opportunity or a discharge point for those existing residents. So, in our initial conversations, as Mr. Neufeld was looking at that, we said, you know, this may be an opportunity to provide them a relief or something.
So, it's been a long-term, it's been a long-term problem?
It's been as long as I've been here and been aware of it and have to see Mr. Costello can share.
Has the benefit been for the Wires and Management Committee this drainage?
It is, and we've talked about it. Again, it just kind of sits in a low area and there's not anything directly to drain that out. Normally, you've got a stream or you've got something nearby or a storm sewer or something else to take to it. You know, this pocket and corner, we've got some sanitary sewer areas. We're lacking sanitary sewer in this corner. We've got some other opportunities where we've got some storm sewer issues. So, this kind of lower end of Jackson Road, Whalen Road, you know, we've got some infrastructure issues that have been persistent.
Are there any drainage issues to the east?
Not that I'm aware on the existing Christmas tree farm and to my knowledge, Jim said the only time he's seen water in the pond on the Autumn Oak Circle Pond was in the '91 ice storm. That's the only time he's seen water in that pond. That being said, I say it's kind of an older-designed pond. It's not meeting the current stormwater regulations. You can see it looks overgrown from the photos, needs to be dredged out, cleaned. So, that's a potential opportunity that, you know, the developer could do it at his cost, you know, save some town tax dollars of having us to do regular maintenance on that or do some upgrades on that.
Is conventional zoning 21 units?
We haven't gotten into this yet. It is half-acre zoning. I think it is, what, 12 acres?
Thirteen plus or minus, but that depends on the domains, the old folks that are selling it to us. They want a little bit more of the property on their existing house just because they feel they want it. So, it could go up or down based on what they'd like and we told them we'd defer to them. to them first, and then, excuse me, design around that. So, somewhere around 12 to 13.
Acres, 12 to 13 acres to have acre zoning district. By the time you take out for the roadways and then, you know, as Councilman Metzler shared, you know, some of the conversation at PRC today was, you know, showing a conventional design, have him design it that he can wholly handle his stormwater on his site, his roads, everything. And then if, once he establishes that, then establishes density, and then after that density, then, you know, if this board was so willing, then look at, you know, could we consolidate that drainage on town property? He's not getting any more units out of it, but it gives us one regional pond, you know, one area to maintain instead of potentially two or more.
I think the request is premature at this point, given those circumstances, and I'm not convinced that, at this point in time, it's appropriate for the board to act. There's a lot of what-ifs and speculation about numbers and dollars and drainage and units. So, I would move that we deny the request at this time without prejudice for Mr. Newfeld to come back in the future when it's more appropriate.
I would second that, because I, you know, first blush, I mean, I don't have the argument as being swayed to make a decision on this one. It hasn't been before the planning board with the development plan in place to have us look at it and, you know, what are the alternatives? You've got to see something first, I think, before we can make a decision. I know what, I know what you're talking about, but it just seems premature.
Other discussions, other comments?
I would just like to add that I agree with Paula and Linda. I think we should take a look at what is going to be on the landowner's property versus what is being proposed to be on town property. Even though there may be some benefit to the neighboring residents on those streets, I don't want to go down that road at this point. I certainly don't support adding any more retention ponds, but I think we should have the applicant go back and see what they can do on the property that they're looking to purchase. Rudy, did you buy the property?
We haven't bought it yet.
Okay, you haven't bought it yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, and is the seller, is the resident that's immediately to the south of where you're proposing, or the owner is immediately to the south of where you're proposing the driveway entrance or the road entrance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Yeah, so I am going to stick to what I just said before. I'm not, I'm not supporting any additional retention ponds on that town-owned land. And if the applicant wants to go back, as Councilwoman Metzler said, and look at doing something within their property, I'll take a look at that. But as this is proposed right now, I do not support that.
So, just so we're clear from a record standpoint, I'm not sure that the applicant is proposing to put an additional pond on town property. It is a case of potentially draining the property to our current pond, maybe upgrading it, enhancing it, bringing it up to standards, but not adding a second pond. So, I guess I'm going to look for clarification.
I believe this was just for sizing, can I ask them, just for ballpark and sizing with that? Obviously, much more detail to come and much more design to, you know, to...
Did, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
No, just as I said, much more design to come. They would have to analyze the existing hydraulics coming to the pond. We can provide them the background data on that.
The drawing is showing an additional stormwater management pond and a bow retention area in addition to the existing pond.
Right.
So, how is that not creating more area?
I asked them just to, just to show a size based on the engineer's understanding of what they've done in the past. So, I think he just kind of dropped an area just to show how much additional, it can be merged into our existing pond, and that was something that staff would push them to, is let's expand the existing ponds. Again, we have one. Moving a pond off his property to make two ponds on our property doesn't create any benefit for us. Our benefit to the town is to reduce, to the point is to reduce the number of ponds, reduce the number of outfall structures. So, expanding the existing pond, bringing it up to current standards, sizing it appropriately so it handles the existing drainage as well as, you know, his new drainage, could potentially be a benefit to the town. Now, we've got one pond, we've got it up to all, up to current standards. It's clean, it's maintained properly. Generating two or three ponds on our property, I don't see that to be a benefit to the town.
That's in my motion.
Okay. So, it's, any other discussion?
I couldn't, I could agree more with what Paula said.
All right, there's a motion. At this point, there's a motion to deny, and a second for that. I would only add the following, that certainly the town has approximately 160 retention facilities today that we're responsible for. And anytime that we have an opportunity to reduce the number of those or to bring some into compliance, so that it doesn't have to be covered by taxpayer dollars by the entire town. I would only encourage that as the applicant looks at bringing this to the planning board and concept plan, at least look at that possibility of making sure that we're minimizing the ponds where we can, and at least vet out what is being proposed to see if, in fact, it's worthwhile. And then I would support bringing that back to the board at some point to look to see if, in fact, that makes some sense, once it's engineered and vetted out a bit.
Sure. Mark, I would also suggest putting it on Watership Management Agenda, even just for informal discussion with the group there. Tony, if you think that's...
Yep. No, I think that's...
Yeah, that'll be timely as Mr. Newfeld's coming along with his plan. He'll be probably submitting for a February application for the planning board, our next Watership Meeting is in February, so I think it'll be timely to bring that in and run that through the group at the same time.
Okay.
One last question?
Yes, sir.
I know you don't have any renderings, but what type of home are you looking to build here? What, give us a little better idea.
Yep. You guys familiar with Legacy Circle, the little development I did off Baird Road, where staff had enough confidence in us? We left most of the big oaks, and it was a lot of drainage and piping, but I think the subdivision came out beautiful and was worth the effort. There's a lot of pines on this. So, our intention here, this will be another Legacy Circle. The cost of the property was far higher than we're used to paying, but we think there's value to this little gem. So, these houses will probably start about $375 to $400, and will probably go from $375 to $500. So, it's going to be a very upscale neighborhood. We're going to, like we always do, preserve every tree that we can. There's a number of pines here that are too big to move, but there's also probably 150 beautiful trees that are 12 to 14 feet tall. Well, the old folks love these trees, and so do we. So, we will work our designs in two stages, so that all the trees that are to be destroyed, that can be moved, will be moved in sections. So, even when we're done, it's going to look like this development has been here for 20 years. And let me just add this, too, just so the board doesn't think that we came for this proposal to save a lot. We by no means did. We love this property, and whatever's the right development, we're happy with. We didn't come up with this idea to try to squeeze an extra lot out or in. The cost of a lot would be well compensated by what it's going to cost to upgrade this retention facility. So, this came up with Martin, who does our stormwater, and staff talked about it. They said, would you consider upgrading our piece and combining? Well, it's a little out of my league, I'm not a hydraulics engineer, but they said, yeah, we'd look at it. So, that was the outcome of why we're here tonight. And then we decided, before I go and design that, let's find out what you folks even feel. If you say there's no way we want you on our property, then we go to Plan B. So, we're totally open to create the best possible design that fits this property, whatever that may be.
Okay. All right. So, we discussed about getting it in front of Watership Management, so we'll look to do that. I think we've talked about, as you're looking at designs, concept plan for that, certainly take a look at both options, to vet both of those out, and then we'd look to bring it back to this board. And again, before you had it totally engineered, because I'm sensitive about cost for residents, developers, engineers, and things like that, but to vet it out so the board could see the pluses, minuses of that, and would certainly entertain back for review. Can I summarize it, Board, without... Okay. So, at this time, denied the motion, and a second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That's where we are, and you'll take next steps from there.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
All right. That takes care of our guests. We will move on to action items. The first action item is Parker Hill Drive sidewalk waiver request. Mr. Valentine, if you will, please.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. So, this was before the board quite a while back. This is the Panorama Office Park. This board looked at it as a grading fill permit, going up the Panorama Valley area, former Camp Hackamo property. And under that, this board worked on the, as I say, the grading fill permit, the tree clearing. That's progressed. They've been working with the planning board on the overall site layout, the design of the property, and now coming down to, as they're laying out lots and coming to that, they've submitted a sidewalk waiver request form for the property to do one side internally. So, I kind of, it's quite large plans, so I shrank it down to eight and a half by 14, merged two plans together, so some of the lines are like arts and crafts project. As I put it together, then I tried to highlight in green where the proposed sidewalks are going. So, they're complying with the ordinance of putting sidewalks along the Panorama Trail frontage. They're putting sidewalks internally on one side of the road, as well as providing a connection over to the existing Thermal Fisher property. So, based on our past policies, I've put it into our spreadsheet analysis. Being a commercial property, basically, our sidewalk waiver says you need to do it on the frontage plus both sides internal, but at the very least for sidewalk waiver, you need to basically install 50% of the construction cost. So, we put it in the spreadsheet. Basically, overall compliance is $240,000. They are installing approximately $121,000 worth of sidewalks from what they're showing. So, they've exceeded the 50% compliance on that. So, they're asking this board if you're supportive of waiving the sidewalk on the other side of the road off.
So, Mark, I know somebody's going to ask the question, has this been reviewed by PRC? Would their thoughts, comments, or any...
Yep. Both the PRC and the planning board have looked at it. Both are supportive of the waiver. As part of the waiver, there's also a connection, pedestrian connection over to the Mobile Home Park. So, off the end of the cul-de-sac, there's now going to be a pedestrian connection over the Mobile Home Park. We've already seen people coming down that way. They've always kind of used this property as access to get down to Tops and get down to the Plaza. It's a much safer route than going down 441.
What kind of exit, what kind of pathways?
Right now, it's just a...
Is it dirt?
A walking pathway, yeah, just a dirt path now. But obviously, with the sidewalk going in, with the road going in, it's always been kind of a dirt path that came down through the hillside with the cul-de-sac coming up there. Now, it's a much shorter...
With the sidewalk, will it help?
The sidewalk comes all the way to the top of the hill, and then there'll be a short little, maybe a dirt path over to the Mobile Home Park from there.
Oh, still dirt paths.
The last little portion is, yes.
Is all the, what we said for the sidewalk, is all the infrastructure in?
The road is in, utilities are in. So, that's, again, they kind of came in in a multi-phase. They wanted to build the road, to get the road in, clear the pads, did some of that with this board here, and then are working with the planning board on individual lots for individual buildings. So, they haven't started constructing any buildings yet. The payment just went in earlier last month in November. They're doing, finalizing some other areas, but they've kind of roughed the pads out and now coming in to do the buildings and everything else. The sidewalks aren't in as of yet.
What, I'm sure that the green was highlighted for a reason, but what side of the road are most of the buildings going to be located? The side with the sidewalk?
They're on both sides, they're pretty much equal. They go on both sides of the road, and obviously sidewalks would be required internally within the developments. Each building would have sidewalks to it and bring it back to the road, so then, you know, if people work there, they could then cross the road or be on their side of the road, connect in and come down. But, yeah, I think there's one, two, three, four on this side, one, two, actually more around the, as you're looking at, on the south side. So, the side with the sidewalk has more of a number of buildings.
And just remind me again, is there a sense of projected square footage and number of employees are fully occupied? I mean, have they been able to do any kinds of forward projections?
Yeah. Overall, I mean, overall, it was approved for 300-plus thousand square feet. Overall buildings, the first building proposed is a 40,000-square-foot building on Building A. It's a 15,000-square-foot building in front of the planning board now for this lower lot here. So, we've got an application on, so this is Building A, and this is, Building B is here. So, currently, there's two applications in. Building A is currently before the planning board and zoning board now on this parcel, and then Building B is on this lower portion right now. So, both of those are pending applications before the planning board.
And that's about, it's only about a fourth, a fifth of the total? So, 350, you said, and that's about 60,000?
Yep.
Okay.
So, they've exceeded the 50%, you said, correct?
Yep.
And new sidewalk will be extended along the whole, the west side of Panorama Trail?
Correct. It'll fill in a gap we've had for a number of years.
And then even with the waiver, the project will still have significant pedestrian access from the lots?
Yep.
All the lots within development connected to Panorama Trail South and Panorama Creek Drive?
Yes. Yeah, this doesn't, the internal sidewalks, if you've got a building and parking lots and everything else, you know, the planning board will look at internal pedestrian connectivity within the closet, or then each building, and then, you know, its connection to the street. This is just a portion along Parker Hill Drive as it pulls up the hill.
Where's the, Allen's Creek and Roncoy Creek meet?
It is just off the page, so if you come at the end of Panorama Creek, you can see just the corner of Allen's Creek is on this top edge. So, Allen's Creek is right here.
Right.
Roncoy Creek is right here, so the confluence, the little portion we own is the other side of Thermal Fisher. So, Thermal Fisher is here.
So, that's not any part of the...
It's off of that, a little bit remote from that, but...
I was going to ask if there's any conversations with the Trails Committee about...
The Trails Committee was interested in this connection to the Mobile Home Park at the top, and that's being incorporated into the project.
Mark, just remind me again with the new waiver, what is the, I guess, remind me again, what is the waiver? What is the benefit or what monetary benefit is...
We were trying to balance the cost. Basically, we said that at a minimum, you need to, if a waiver was granted, at a minimum, you would pay 50% of the construction cost. If you were below that amount, you would pay some gap fee to fill in that gap. So, what if your project only was a tenth of that or some amount, you would pay up to 50%? They exceed that, they're at 121 and change, thousand out of 230-some. So, they're two-thirds, three, you know, not three-quarters, but two-thirds of the way there, so they've exceeded that amount. So, according to our policy, they meet the warrants for a full waiver from...
With approval by this board.
With approval by this board. Yeah, that's just kind of, are they there or not? Just trying to see if math-wise, if they're not paying their fair share, then they would pay some amount into the fund.
I'm not opposed to the waiver. The reason I sort of asked about the full development again was, I work at Woodcliff, and there's only a sidewalk on one side of that road going up and down the hill. It's used very early, and I don't know what the total square footage there or how many employees are there, but I, I mean, I think from a safety factor, I don't have a concern. We don't have, I'm just trying to think, though. I don't think we have any office parks in the town that are like this, correct? Because Lyndon Oaks is all outside of the town, and I don't think that we have any that have multiple buildings over, I mean, all the other office parks I'm thinking of are sort of surrounded by parking lot and not necessarily with a longer road.
Yeah, I guess I only think of like Spring Pines Office Park, kind of has a loop road that comes in.
Right.
Plank and...
Between Plank and Empire, or Plank and Empire, Spring Pines Office Park, like a multiple-building setup.
North Forest.
North Forest, a little bit smaller, but
I'm not opposed to the waiver.
And any discussion about the connection from this project to the Mobile Home Park?
That's a requirement. This is an easement here that guarantees that that's going to carry forward. I think the Planning Board, once it comes up to this next lot, you know, may talk about more of if there's a material to that, if that's stone dust, or if that's mulch or whatever. But in this, as part of their approvals, was the requirement that that easement is in place.
So that the easement is in place?
Yep.
And then as part of that particular last lot up there
I think they could get into more detailed discussion of
Of finishing off that small piece so that coming off Mobile Home Park into that area, there's at least some reasonable path, walkway, whatever the case is, before they hit the sidewalk itself.
What's the distance? The grade change, is it still a serious grade change, or is it?
No, they've graded that out. Through the same area, there was a connection, a required connection for a water main.
Okay.
The water, 31 of it looped, so they've got a connection at the bottom and a connection at the top. So as they installed the water main, they had to taper off that grade, so it's made it much more of a manageable slope through there. But that's, again, something, you know, we can take a closer look at with the Planning Board. Once we get to that specific lot and they have the building planned and everything else, they can make sure that detail.
And then the distance, because it would really only be from
It's a couple hundred feet.
Cul-de-sac to the end of the property.
Yeah. At the top, you're pretty much at the, there's a fence at the top that differentiates their property from right away at 441. To get up here, there's a chain link fence, so you're only 100 feet or 50 feet from the chain link fence at the top, and then that easement runs along that fence. It's kind of along the ridge line at the top of the hill.
Just out of curiosity, would that be something we'd want to explore with a waiver, or just take the waiver individually? As far as sort of that final access point?
Well, I think it would be appropriate, you know, as part of the letter that goes back, if the Board grants the waiver, you know, to indicate that it is in the Board, it is expected by this Board that, you know, we complete an appropriate walkway through that, through that area. One of the things that we've talked about for decades is people walking from Mobile Home Park along 441
Oh, absolutely.
Down into Panorama. Here is an opportunity
Sure.
For that last 200 feet to be taken care of. Folks have a safe walkway from Mobile Home all the way down to connect onto Panorama Trail, and then sidewalks that are already existing to take into the Plaza area.
There's nothing that precludes us from including those conditions in the waiver?
Right.
Okay, sorry. Incorporate that in the letter and say, you know, that's a requirement of the waiver is some improvement to what that condition is, you know, whether it's stone dust or whatever material or something at that time.
So benefits beyond the office park.
Some improvement to that.
Okay. Other discussion comments?
No, I'd make a motion that we grant the waiver with some of the conditions we stipulated, including the access to the property to Mobile Park.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Is there any other discussion regarding this? Staff, is there anything aware, anything additional we should be aware of that it hasn't already been added to the record?
No.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mark. We'll move on to Item B. This is a variance request for a driveway width at 1549 Empire Boulevard. Mr. Valentine?
Here to this evening is Mr. Gengemi. He's the owner of 1549 Empire Boulevard. He's been working with the Planning Board on converting that, Seron Carr Boulevard, next to, south of Frank Road, next to the apartment complex that's right there. Is a single-family home. Mr. Gengemi has purchased that property and is working with the Planning Board to convert that to a dyslexia center. So he's looking to do some upgrades to the building, as well as upgrades to the parking. Through that, working with the DOT and everybody else to upgrade his entrances to meet DOT standards. Right now, they're residential. He's got some parking off of that, so working with the DOT to upgrade his entrance, and then run a commercial driveway down into his property. So as part of that, trying to fit a standard, and why it's before this Board, is our standard requires a 24-foot driveway width for all commercial driveways. Some of this is you're trying to retrofit a commercial driveway into what are residential homes and into the back. So I know Mr. Gengemi is working on a couple of different options, so we don't have a final plan in front of the Board, but one of the issues, if it does go on the south side, is trying to fit a 24-foot driveway between two existing homes. Look like it, you know, 20 feet may be more appropriate and fit better, so
Is this before a Board right now?
It is before the Planning Board, yes. But our design criteria, which falls under this Board, requires it to be 24-foot wide. They're running into some issues trying to get that to fit, along to fit the range and everything else. The DOT will require a 24-foot wide connection at the road, but then as you taper back into the property, PRC and staff is supportive of going down to 20 feet, but that's a waiver from our
So PRC has vetted it, and Fire Marshal as far as fire safety
Yep. So we've talked with them. I'd say they're still working on their final design with the Planning Board, but just wanted to see if this Board was supportive of possibly modifying that driveway width. You know, many of our roads in town are 20 feet wide, so it's not, you know, it's not unheard of to have a 20-foot wide driveway width. It's just our commercial standard, but as we're, as I say, going in and retrofitting some of these homes to now being, converting over into commercial properties, you just run into logistic issues between existing structures and making drainage work and grades work and everything else.
So is the driveway going to be on the east or the west side of the home?
Currently shown on the
West side?
West side or south side, depends on how you're
True enough, yeah.
There's an existing driveway there today for the residential house. It's a shared driveway that connects his property, as well as the house in the back on the neighboring property. So they have a shared driveway there, and then some logistics they're working out is how to share that.
And it'll continue to be a shared driveway?
I mean, they have an easement over it, so the neighbor has an easement rights over the driveway, so he has to work that out with the neighbor, you know, as well as work out, you know, his connection configuration with the DOT at the road.
What's the house next door being currently used as?
Residential property.
So, single-family residential at this time?
Yeah.
And the proposal is for this dyslexia center that is going to be going in at that location. So driveway, driveway will continue to be shared. DOT, DOT is holding to 24 feet, the apron 24 feet within the right of way.
Yep.
And then as it gets into the property, then it tapers, tapers down from there.
The other problem he'd run into is if he closes off the existing driveway, he still has to provide access to the neighbor to the back, but the problem is if he goes to the north or to the east side
Or the east side, north, north
He now butts a multi-residential zoning district, which means he needs to have a buffer, which now means that he would have to go into the Zoning Board of Appeals and request a variance.
Right.
And the hardship question is, why do you need a variance if you've got the ability to build on the other side?
Well, you've already, and it's already there.
It's already there.
Essentially, it's already, it's already there, and to move it creates a variance. I mean, that doesn't seem to make, you know, any sense overall, so.
So he's got a couple of boards to potentially work through. It is before the Planning Board, maybe before the Zoning Board, but obviously, you've seen what his options are to
Is this part of the LaSalle's landing?
It is just outside of there.
Okay, it is just outside of LaSalle's. Okay. So it really, it really is just before us for design criteria only at this point.
And neighbors aware of the need for this? Are your neighbors, neighboring properties aware?
Of the need for the width of the driveway?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, currently, the driveway is 14 to 16 feet wide and has been operating, you know, as a residential property, has been, you know, operating fine with that, but now for bringing in, you know, people to the dyslexia center, he's having tutors and students there, as soon as you're bringing more people in, you know, is the need that kicks it into upgrading it to a commercial driveway. It's still not commercial as far as an entrance to Walmart or Wegmans or something else, but it still falls under that
Are there going to be more parking, you're saying, like?
Yeah, you've got 15 parking spaces in the back.
Okay, they're not parking in this 20-foot road?
No, no, there's an existing lot.
There's some existing space in the front that they're using, and then he's looking at a 15-foot, or excuse me, 15-space parking lot in the back, so now the parking's not on this.
I don't know if the Fire Marshal's for it. PRC doesn't have any problems, and it seems like it's a workable solution.
Yeah, I think it'll, it'll work. Obviously, just need to
And actually, would give neighbors more room, yes?
It'd be larger than it is today. So right now, it's 14 to 16 feet, so this would be an upgrade to what's there today, but it just wouldn't meet the full 24-foot width that our code requires, or excuse me, the design criteria requires.
Okay.
I move for the 20-foot variance. A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion by the Board. Anything additional, Board, that we should be aware of that hasn't already been added into the record? Any, any comments, additional comments or feedback from the owner?
Well, I just got to get a plan that'll, you know, meet all the needs as far as grade, and there were some comments from Monroe County about water runoff and other things, so assuming this
From county or state?
It was Monroe County, wasn't it?
Okay. It was part of 239.
The county owns, it's the county park in the back.
In the back. Got it.
So, but county park land is where he ultimately dreams off to.
Got it. Okay. All right. Seeing no further comments or input on this matter, it's been moved and seconded. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the matter carries. Thank you. Thank you, Staff. This brings us down to Item C, and this is a request for a conditional use permit for a seasonal tent in the outdoor area at K2 Brewery located 21, excuse me, 1221 Empire Boulevard. And Mr. Costello, I knew you were here for a reason, Mr. Costello.
You're so far away.
I know, I'm not used to this.
I can't see you anymore.
You had met with the Kennedy family on October 23rd initially to discuss the possibility of allowing them that, requesting on your part to have two tents on the site for a period of four months on an annual basis from November 1st to March 31st. They had not utilized any of their special permit allowances for the year for any special events, so they requested they be allowed to install the tents for a period of time to really celebrate their anniversary date. You thought it was a good idea to put them up just so that you could get a feel for what it looked like and how it impacted the area. They did put them up on the 18th of November. They then came back to the Board for a public hearing on the 4th of December to see if they could have the tents on a permanent basis for that four-month period. I shouldn't say on a permanent basis, but on an annual basis for that four-month period. We have not to date had any complaints or concerns. We've inspected the site. The building inspector and the Fire Marshal have been working with them. They've done a good job in terms of traffic safety along Overtrack Road. No concerns on the neighbors' parks that I'm aware of at this point in time. They usually call me first. And they really have not had a lot of, a lot of high-density in the tents since they put it up, from what I can see. I've been down a couple times to look at it on the weekends.
Did you go to the anniversary party?
I did not.
I was wondering how that went as far as
I didn't, and I know that you went down and looked at the tent on a Saturday.
I didn't go to the anniversary party.
No, but you looked at the tents, and so you had a feel for what was going on with traffic safety.
I thought it was well done.
I, you know
The traffic control is great as far as parking and everything?
They've done a pretty good job. I've thought about things like keeping accessways clean throughout the winter months to make sure there's adequate access in and out of the tents if they need to for this ongoing situations of an emergency. We did talk about the fact that they still wanted to continue their music, as you had approved it up until no later than 10:00 PM on three days a week, so they can't do it seven days a week. Things such as getting the tents down at the end of the month on March, not having them up for a period of time, because as you noted, at the public hearing, the state code requires that they be down within six months. Otherwise, you have to sprinkle out the tents and the building, because it is now an extension of the building, and I know you were worried about that when we first started this discussion in October. So those were the kind of the things that we looked at. Keeping the fire pits closed at all times, obviously. No cooking in the facilities whatsoever, just only in the existing building now. They can serve food there if they want, but they could not cook. Those are kind of the main topics of concern, I think, at this point in time.
I think the other thing that was discussed at the public hearing was the fact that the heater was physically outside of the tents and away from the tents, and it would be an elephant trunk that would provide the heat into, into that area, but the heaters themselves outside of the tent overall.
And the Fire Marshal, as you know, was there to oversee and direct the installation of the tents and the heating system adjacent to them.
And the securing of the fire pits?
And securing the fire pits as well, so.
So remind this Board, Jim, you know, one of the items that I'd noted at the public hearing was with regards to the parking, and the notes that I, that I had taken is that they had engaged a real estate agent to look at acquiring some additional parking, and I believe they indicated that at this time that, that activity has fallen through or has stopped?
I did meet with the real estate agent. They are still continuing to look at other options in that area, and they, I think, are going to go and try and go back to the property owner to see if they can do something else with them as an alternative to what they initially proposed. So they are still working on it, and I do talk to the Realtor on a regular basis about it, so. They have not gotten the success that they're looking for to date, but they are still working.
Well, I'm heartened that they have control of it on their second year anniversary, because there's going to be one date that it's going to be, you know, crazy traffic, it'll be that day.
I was pleased, though. When I went down, as I said, I took pictures for the public hearing. I was pleased that they had installed the signage identifying no parking along the right of Overtrack Road, which has been helpful.
And around the, we could do something about the pump station?
Pump station.
Where the pump station is.
Yes, we're going to put a chain across at some point in time here fairly soon.
Right now, well, it's melted down a little, and still, it's got to remain clear too.
Yes, at all times.
So we are responsible for our pump station, so we, we actually take care of the pump, and I know Eric has ordered the ballards to have those installed, and I think if not for the early snow, he would have had that taken care of. So we'll get those in, we'll chain that off specifically with Town of Penfield, and we'll take it right up to the roadway coming in so that there'll be no opportunity to park there and to impact our pump stations in the event that we had to get in for any emergency type of situations.
They had a problem earlier on with people parking immediately into that pump station line, so they had like five or six cars there early on. We expressed our concern to Lori about that. She's been pretty vigilant about keeping people out of that area, so I don't know if it's 100%, but it's
We learned that if you try to park where you're not supposed to, you have to deal with Mrs. Kennedy.
That's right.
She seemed to be a pretty good
She's pretty good about it. So it's been pretty good since we brought that to her attention.
And so that the conditional use, would be a conditional use permit?
Yes.
And my sense is that it would probably speak to parking?
It does, and, you know, I'm preparing, I'm in the process of preparing a resolution for you, which I'll get to you if you're going to move forward on this, to talk about the fact that they do have to continue their efforts to seek additional parking. Regardless of the situation, they do need it anyways.
Right.
So they're going to have to continue to do that to make sure the tent is closed down to the public after no later than 10:00 PM at night. That's what they talked about, and that's what you heard. And that if there's any modification proposed by them to the things that we talked about at the public hearing and the meeting on the 23rd of October, they would have to come twenty-third of October, they would have to come back to you for that revision to discuss whether it warrants consideration.
The only other question I have, I'm just kind of throwing it out there to the board. I don't really have an opinion on what might be others. But I know that we've, when we've done conditional use permits, this is sort of the first instance of this kind of a structure. But I think I heard you mention sort of like an, an annual permit.
Well, they're not going to need an annual permit. You're getting, you're, they're requesting. What they will have to do, though, is the fire marshal will have to be there each time the tent is erected to ensure that they're doing it.
Well, I guess then maybe that answers my question because I was trying to figure, I mean, I was kind of hesitant about the fact that this is going in perpetuity. That, I mean, I think that there should be some oversight that maybe after a year or two years, is it still meeting the expectation of what this board is sort of, you know, because if it changes ownership, for example?
Oh, no. If it changes ownership, they have to come, whoever comes in.
Okay. So, you're starting to answer some of my concerns. So, I, I guess then I'm okay with how the permit will be run. But certainly, the fire marshal there every year when it, when it is, you know, erected and then...
Absolutely.
You know, if it changes ownership, it does not run with...
No, it does not. It's not transferable. None of your conditional use permits are transferable. Everybody has to come in under a change of use or a change of operatorship to ensure that they're doing what they need to do to meet codes.
Because that's in the resolution.
Even though they indicate, even, even though they indicate that everything remains the same.
It's, it's similar to what you're dealing with with all these restaurants you've had to deal with where all the new people have to come into each time because of that fact that, you know, you're dealing with parking issues. You're dealing with public safety, public health. That's why we bring them into every single, every single new unit.
It's also good to see, we've seen in the past, to see if there's things that we can do better or ways to change once they've gotten their feet wet a little bit.
And then, of course, if they violate any of the terms of the conditions of approval, you have the opportunity to set a public hearing to determine whether or not the permit should be, you know, revoked or not.
You hope you don't have to go down that path, but certainly that is an option. I think the only other thing that I might suggest to the board that we would include in, in the resolution might be that at the end, at the end of this period, that we invite them back to this board at a work session to do kind of a debrief and to take a look at what, if any, issues that may have come up. Because certainly, anything that pops up early, we want to address early as well. And because this is a, a new application, I might suggest that they come back and do a, kind of an update for us and might ask that we schedule that for either the first or second, preferably the first work session in April because the tent will be done the end of March. And have them come in the first, that would be the second meeting of April and to kind of do a debrief as to what worked well, within more concerns, anything like that.
I'm going to put that in as a condition.
Yep. No, I, I, that's what I would suggest that we do.
Very good.
Okay. Or, any other questions, comments?
No, I move that we approve this request.
I'll second.
With all the conditions that Jim and Lori's put in, I think, when they did his resolution areas.
I'll have one for you.
Everything you've talked about.
You have something for the board to review?
ASAP.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Seeing no, there is a motion on the table and a second. I just asked, staff, anything additional that we should add to the record that hasn't already been discussed this evening or at the public hearing?
We've got everything.
All right. Move the second of those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you very much. This brings us down to item D. And it's a conditional use permit, site plan approval for apartment building at thirteen eighty-four Brown, or Empire Boulevard. And Mr. Costello, your name is tagged. Anything new or different that you would like to share with the board before we have the cast of owners, engineers, and others?
Thank you, Tony. The only thing I want to bring to the board's attention is the fact that we had, the staff, the engineering and planning departments have been continuously reviewing their application, their plans. I, I think we've issued three or four PRC memos now, which they, which, where's Jess? This Jess has responded to. And I think we're pretty much, we're pretty much satisfied with the technical issues associated with the project. You know, there are things that they're going to have to do as part of the development process if it ever gets, gets approved. But in terms of what we needed to have, in terms of, you know, meeting our code requirements and meeting the engineering requirement standards, they have worked out those details with us. Some of the things that are just kind of outstanding, and I'm going to let the board talk more about where you want to go with it, but just a couple of outstanding things is, in our latest discussions, one of the, one of the things we talked about was the fact that during the time that they had built the Basil's Restaurant, they had installed a sidewalk along the perimeter of their property out front on Empire Boulevard. There's an area to the west of their building that kind of falls off into like a wetland area. They did not show a sidewalk easement or sidewalk area in that, in that area. They would have had to get a DEC permit. And that's going to be very difficult. We've been trying to get DEC and Army Corps Engineer permits to put sidewalks along Empire Boulevard in the wetland areas as well. And we'd run into some snags here and there. So, I can imagine they would do the same thing. But we did talk about the fact that we do have a new sidewalk policy. And I guess you'd have to wrestle through how you want to handle that one stretch. I think it's about two hundred and thirty-eight feet of area as to whether or not you want to just take an easement and then do the fee as you suggested earlier in the previous application here tonight, or just let it go as it's not going to be easy to develop that sidewalk at any time in the near future. And then, the second thing is that we've had discussions about the issues regarding traffic safety on Empire Boulevard. And as you know, when they built the apartment complex, they were part of that early on. They did install the middle turn lane down Empire Boulevard. We have talked about the idea of extending that turn lane down further to provide safety for the people of Uber Track Road. And I think I'm going to let you talk about that later, but I think that you're supportive of possibly contributing to that effort along with some of the others that are thinking about doing things on Empire Boulevard. So, those are the outstanding issues that we've been dealing with. But in terms of what we've asked of them, of them for the engineering materials they've provided to us, anything that you could add to that?
I think you hit the highlight points on that. I know we've gone back and forth. And I know the DEC is, is looking at the water treatment and the SWIP and everything else we've provided them. The SWIP recently, they requested that. So, I know the DEC is still looking at some finer details on that. But the matter is that we've gone through most of the technical stuff or all the technical stuff that we've had. And they've come back and addressed at least staff's concerns.
They have just recently, I think on the sixth of, of December, given us the final things that we requested on our PRC memos. They've sent that to us in letter format and shown on their site plans, so.
All right.
Yeah. From our standpoint, I guess thank you for having us here tonight on the agenda. And we're, we're looking forward to moving forward with this project with your blessing. You know, we, we believe it's a great project for the area. It's a culmination of a long time of planning and a lot of different analysis that we've done. I know my brother has a very brief presentation, less than about five minutes, just to kind of bring you up to speed with, most importantly, what has changed since the last time we were here presenting this project to this, to this board. And so, I'll let my brother go through that fairly quickly.
So, I'm going to set a couple of ground rules.
Yes.
First off, I, I heat off your comment about brief. So, when I think brief, I don't think of a presentation that John Caruso makes that isn't always brief.
He's locked in the back. He's locked in the trunk.
Okay. So, yeah, I want to make sure, I want to, two, this isn't a rehearing of the hearing. And three, I would anticipate, based on the, on the letter that we received December fourth, it would highlight some of either the changes or improvements that have been made as part of the conversations that we've had.
Yes.
Okay.
Deal.
All right. So, I will hold, I will hold you to that.
I'll go quick.
It looks like I need to make a step.
I'll go quick. It's mostly pictures. There's only one or two slides with any kind of writing on it. And if I go too quick, if you want me to slow down, just let me know.
That probably won't happen.
Give it five seconds. Let me mess with our, it's getting brighter. It's, it'll come on in a second.
All right. So, we'll start with the first slide. This is the original site plan that we took a look at. We had quite a few comments from the town board. One of the first ones, of course, was that we're encroaching out of the wetland, which, as Jim noted, that would have been an issue with DEC. The entrance area was a little too tight. We had some emergency access issues. The very front of the property had, we were removing the trees on Empire Boulevard. I know the board had some concerns with that. There were some questions with the trail and the access throughout the waterfront areas. The back garage was at one point added to make sure there was enough parking. And in general, the overall size of the, of the project was, was a concern. So, what's changed, based on the town's recommendations, we reduced the project by the equivalent of twelve units. We've eliminated over eighty-five hundred square feet, which is equivalent to about a hundred thousand cubic feet, about the same size as Basil's Restaurant. We, we eliminated completely sixteen bedrooms from the initial count. We've eliminated all the outdoor covered parking spaces facing the backside. We've improved those emergency access roadways in the entrance area with more space. We reduced the size of the building, which allowed us to eliminate any DEC wetland encroachments by that reduction. We're keeping all the trees on Empire Boulevard. They'll no longer be removed. We've improved the town amenities to include a full connection of public waterway access trails. We've completed full reviews with the town, planning board. They've been great to work with. What has not changed is the tax credits, COEDA. There are absolutely no tax credits or grants or anything. It's all private. And the increase of the property taxes from fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. This is the plan that you originally saw. And if you look at this building over here, this is the original size of the building. By doing the reductions, if you keep an eye on this building here, the next slide's got an overlay, that's the size of it right now. So, it's a substantial change. The other thing that we've done is, when we talk about the trails, the blue is, it's not exact, but it's pretty close to where the easements are. So, there's some spots that there isn't a current flow of all the public access. We've included also the public viewing deck. So, that will now all turn into public access through easements. The other thing that's come up, obviously, as well, that we thought would be a good idea, that blue right now represents where there's a turning lane on Empire Boulevard. We believe that the turning lane should be extended to the east and to the west. And the goal is for us to really focus on the possibility of having to increase the space along that pedestrian bridge. And that's where my brother will talk a little later about putting a fund together so that we can contribute money so that one day, hopefully soon, we can actually strike that and turn it into a double lane all the way through. This is just another picture of that area and the amount of businesses that are around Empire Boulevard that could possibly go into that fund as well. We talked about adding the viewing deck. This is a deck that's there right now that's completely private. And this will now be included into the project where it would be a hundred percent full public access lookout deck dedicated to the town. We also have the public launch, which, of course, will remain at South Point Marina to the public. So, the question is, what's next? This is the Bellagio. I don't think we ever showed you guys, you know, really what we were going to be building there. The name comes from the little town in Italy called Bellagio off of Lake Como. So, we're doing the Bellagio off of Lake Ontario. We're also Italian. We want to bring some beauty to that area as well. These are some photographs of what we started with as far as the interior design, some issues, some ideas of what we're looking to build. This is pretty much an exact prototype of what we're going to be doing inside. You'll see it's a bit higher end than the water's edge next door, countertops. You see it's full-size refrigerators. These are just some quick photos of what they're going to look like inside. This is the outdoor water pool. Obviously, we have this already with the Marina Club. We'll be utilizing that same pool area, some more views at night. And this is ultimately the vision of what this is going to be. The last thing we'll talk about is why are we doing this? This was back in the early two thousands when we purchased the land. It was the Bounty Harbor Marina and nothing else, although there was this big hill, of course, where you really didn't have any views looking at the water until you came to about here. It was the Bounty Harbor. We transformed that into South Point Marina. And just like we've done with that, our goal is to do the same with the Marina, I'm sorry, with the apartments. You know, what we focus on is the brand, create a premium brand. We start with the people, uniform smiling. This is what people have gotten to know at South Point Marina. I know we went through a long journey to get that expansion through the DEC. That took about five or seven years. We get entrenched into every project we do. It's a picture of my parents at the barbecue when we first took over the Marina, just to start filling it up, the money that we put into that, flowers, making it beautiful in the summertime. Fast forward a few years after we purchased the Marina, this is when we built Basil Restaurant. There still wasn't anything going on. But the other thing about this picture is you'll see that there are no boats there. And for the majority of the year, which is to say seven months, there typically are no boats there. We'll get to that in a second. This is the Basil Restaurant. If anyone's ever seen that picture. And what we do to take advantage of the summertime, it's beauty with the flowers and the plants to really bring it to life. Fast forward another, you know, ten or fifteen years, that's when, in the past five years, there's been some more growth on the area. Recently, we changed the restaurant from Basil, which was in operation for a little over fifteen or sixteen years, into Mario's Restaurant. We tried to give it some, you know, reverb. Obviously, we had some slowdown in business over there, as did the original restaurant where Murphy's Law currently is. When we did this, our family, you know, gets immersed into the business. There's my father and my brother. For some reason, we haven't been able to get two restaurants to continue through. And now with Murphy's, one of the questions we've been asking ourselves, again, why are we doing this? The extreme seasonality of this area, it's basically from Memorial Day to Labor Day, which is less than four months to make all the money you can so you can pay all the bills. The high water fluctuations obviously have taken a bit...
Toll.
A toll, a bite into us. And you can see the voter visitor traffic dropped about eighty-five, or about eighty percent with the speed limits that have been going into effect the past few years. Most people don't think about going to the lakefront during the cold winter months. So, that's why the business drops. Customer visits drop fifty to seventy percent every year from October to April. It's about a seventh month log. The deepest time is usually January, February, March. Lots of new restaurant options in the area. There's been almost a three-hundred percent increase within a five-mile radius of where we are over the past, it's been about ten or fifteen years since we opened up. The goal is to always have at least one restaurant and ice cream parlor within the project rather than two restaurants competing. I think we bit off more than we can chew with the multiple restaurants. We definitely believe that there needs to be retail and some fun entertainment activities there. Again, this is another picture showing now with all this built, again, another picture of, you know, empty docks. Everyone thinks of it as in the wintertime, or I'm sorry, in the summertime when it's vibrant. But the majority of the time, like day like today for the next few months, you know, this is what it looks like. Again, this is a quick little slide of, this is what we live with. You know, our heart drops to the floor when we see this, when we have Basil and Mario's because on days like this, we, we, literally, we might do three or four dinners because the weather tells everybody not to go out there. As you know, Mario's closed down on November twenty-fourth. Murphy's recently closed on the second. That's currently out for rent. So, now, the question is, how can we give, you know, such a seasonal area year-round hope? And enter the Bellagio with these pictures to give you an idea of, we're looking to do a much more of a premium product there. They have market rate rents, so they're not super premium, but they're just slightly higher than what's there right now so we can give some life into this area year-round. And I leave you with that.
Yeah. And, and, you know, to, to wrap it up, I mean, we, we understand when a push comes to shove, you know, beautiful pictures, great ideas, you know, the number one thing we heard is that it's just, it's, it's big. You know, why couldn't you just put one more of those other buildings or that, similar to what's next door? If you look at the size of the property, we're talking roughly five acres. On five acres, technically, if you go with the same density, we could have put three of the buildings like the ones next door. I think we all agree that's a horrible idea because then you just, you know, you're just building three buildings. You're basically making a wall of apartment buildings between the public and the bay, which, again, horrible idea. So, by having this one structure, it is a structure. It is a slightly bigger building. But you're also allowing it so that when you are driving down Empire Boulevard, when you're looking from all different directions, you're still going to have full access to the water. Visually, you're not, you're not completely messing up the view for the public. And, and going back to public safety, I think we all agree that center turning lane has made a massive change in safety along Empire Boulevard. We have been proponents with DOT. I know the supervisor and town staff has worked very hard with DOT to try to convince them that that's a great idea. So, one of the things that we would like to propose, to kind of put a little cherry on top of, of our application, is, is to start to be the seed for a dedicated Empire Boulevard Safety Enhancement Fund. It's something I believe the town has done before. I know I've talked to Mr. Costello about this type of thing where we would say contribute fifty thousand dollars in the form of either a bond or a letter credit or some kind of guarantee so that when, when the town is ready to, to fund restriping or widening or doing whatever safety improvements that the New York State DOT, because ultimately, they're the ones who have to tell us what we can do. There's some seed money there. And, and I would encourage, obviously, it's at the town's will, but as other developers come along and want to do other things along the Boulevard, they're contributing more money to that fund until you get to a point where hopefully the state funds a bunch of it. But rather than Penfield taxpayers having to foot the bill for the rest, you're getting it from the developers who are, you know, benefiting by the development and approvals that you're granting along that Boulevard. And ultimately, you're talking about public safety. You're talking about something that could potentially save lives and, and certainly benefit the community as a whole. So, you know, we, we don't want to, I think that's long enough before we...
We have more if you'd like.
Yeah. I think we'll call a timeout and, and answer some questions that you might have. And there's certainly more, but I, I think that's the highlights.
So, whoever has the clicker, if you could go back to those things that have changed, that one slide that you had about six or eight bullet points on.
Right there.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. How many parking spaces that are underground?
Ninety-eight, I believe, is that correct, Jess?
Yes, sir. And then everything, everything that was covered outside has been eliminated and incorporated in underground, and then visitors, obviously, additional parking around the building.
That's correct.
As we see today. I think, Mr. Valentine, you indicated from a, or Mr. Costello, I apologize, either one, but you had talked about from a PRC standpoint, those items that were outstanding, either to be addressed, what have you, have been addressed or taken care of.
Yeah, they submitted their most recent set on December sixth, I can't say I went through every little dot in the i and crossing the t, but as far as the majority of the items and stuff, first blush, that was all there. Let's see, Jim shared it, we've had two or three rounds of comments back and forth, renditions with that, so they've been responsive with the replies and updated plans on that, so I believe PRC is, this reflects, you know, the concerns of PRC and reflects the technical concerns we had on site.
Okay. So the proposal to either add or start a fund, I think is something that, and we have, we internally, and with DOT, as myself and staff meet with DOT on an annual basis, to take a look at traffic across all of the town. One of the items that has been consistently on the agenda has been Empire Boulevard. We've gone from, you know, the adding the lane that was put in, and somewhat extended as part of the recent changes that, or improvements that were made as they went further up Empire Boulevard. We just thought that that made a lot of sense to do that, to give traffic an opportunity to have a safe center lane overall, to make that left-hand turn. And one of the things we also had talked about is a light at that location, and the state has been, you know, dead set against the light at any location along Empire Boulevard. So having, having that center turn lane definitely is a plus, and to extend that certainly is something that I know we've been advocates, the town staff and myself have been advocates for now a number of years, so looking to add to that. You mentioned fifty thousand, I'm not sure that's a right number or a wrong number, but it's at least a number to start with overall. I think the bigger issue, or the broader issue, is for us to study that and take a look at that, and to see what makes the most sense. You did identify some buildings or operations down there that might contribute to that, and I think that that does make some sense as either development, redevelopment of that area continues overall. So I'm glad, I'm glad to see that. I'm certainly willing to have some broader conversations about that. However, we have moved in the right direction by reducing square footage, reducing some of the, some of the units, getting away from that outside covered parking area, impacts the wetlands, and then the other amenities of at least connecting the waterways. So this is definitely a step in the, in the right direction, and I think the good news is, I believe you've listened to the board, and so I think the only thing that, you know, I'd be looking to flush out a little bit more might be that those monies, and that would go towards improvement to the roadway along there. And so I think that, at least I'm at a point, I'm willing, I'm willing to look with favor, me personally, look with favor on this, provided that we can work out the details, and if we were to move forward, I certainly would look to have that as a condition of approval to work through that, as to what that, what that would be. Board, I would offer up any additional comments, at least at this time that Jim might, that you might have.
Well, I think, I think it is that they've covered everything that I was looking towards. You know, my, you know, so long I've been involved with that whole waterfront revitalization, LaSalle's Landing, something like that, and the biggest concern I have down there is the environmental impact and to see the bay, because there's not a lot of opportunity in our Penfield portion of the bay for that. And your property is one of the best properties, it has land that you can actually stand on and be there at the bay instead of just driving by, you know. So the more, the more, you know, dealt with the environmental concerns, but you also brought the recreational component towards the public, are able to get around and be a part of it, and you opened up the Marina, so it's no longer private for that viewing stand and so on like that. I think those are all great perks in saving the trees along Empire. I like that parky waterfront nautical feel for it, and I think what you're promoting about the road is excellent, because, you know, anything on Empire Boulevard that has traffic coming into it is always going to be problematic, because Empire Boulevard's such a fair road. And certainly, this should get the state's attention, I would think, when developers are willing to put money into the improvements, to, it's the best for the town, and it's good for you and the other potential developers. So I think, all that being said, well, I mean, I would move to move it ahead.
Other comments for?
Just real quick, the project itself, I know there's a lot of attention with water levels, and it appears that the efforts to lower water levels is not going to happen at least anytime soon. In fact, there seems to be some legitimacy that water levels will stay consistent or may even get higher. Does that have any impact on what you're proposing?
No, we intentionally designed the lowest architectural opening, which is the entrance to the garage level, at an elevation of two-hundred-and-fifty-eight feet. The highest the water level got this year was two-hundred-and-forty-nine, so even with some of the, what I'll call crazy projections that IGC is putting out, our building is still well above even those levels.
Okay. Do you see in the future any need for any retaining walls, or some type of system like that, if levels stay consistent or potentially go up?
No, I mean, I know we're in horizontal distance, we're relatively close to the water, but there is a lot of verticality there that we're able to avoid that. We're not as flood-prone as so many other properties along the bay that are similar to the high water levels.
Okay. And then I would just like to state for the record, we talk about Empire Boulevard, and that is solely controlled by the New York State Department of Transportation, not the town of Penfield. As far as any safety improvements, or any roadway improvements, or traffic, light improvements, it's the State Department of Transportation that makes those decisions. Just wanted to put that on the record.
I think, following up on your comment, just more about the water levels, I think it's important, it's important to note that the town of Penfield did receive a grant from the governor's office specifically for our two pump stations on Empire Boulevard. That was part of the ready program where about thirty million dollars was pushed into Monroe County, more along the lakefront in other counties, but within Monroe County. So as part of that, the designs, the initial designs will be, will be finished by the engineering firm that the state had hired, and they will, they will look to get the money to us to update that. I think the other comment is, is that as part of the rehab, the state DOT did contact my office to indicate that we had talked about about twenty-three-hundred linear feet of roadway, that we had concerns about flooding. And as the remediation of Empire Boulevard, the state elected to raise the road level along the flats by approximately eight or nine inches, again, even though the flooding in seventeen and nineteen only came to the edge of the road, the state wanted to make sure that they had addressed that issue as well. So as part of the record, you know, what that, what that tells me is, is that the state has identified what they, they believe is a watermark that we will see going forward, or at least that's, that's what has come from the governor's office that, overall. Okay. Any other comments?
I think it was real important for you to show your vision as to what you anticipate doing here. We talked about this for a long time, and I think it was also really informative for those who haven't been in Penfield as long as some of us have been, to see how, what has changed there. And you are right, there was no view back in the day, Bounty Harbor days, when it was just a toxic dump, where it brought in, garbage from the city was brought in and dumped, and then made our way down to the Bounty Harbor, which was kind of like in a field almost. So I think that's really important to show that, you know, with development comes change, but there's also, it opens up, opens up the community as well.
Any other discussion?
I moved it.
Okay, so there has been a motion on the table to move forward with the project, and taking into account these items here. Is there a second to that, to that motion?
Mr. Supervisor, did I hear you beforehand, did you mention that you wanted some extra time to look at this and to, to talk some more about what's being proposed by the D'Aniellis with the fifty thousand?
I think that one of the items that I thought we should do is to kind of flush, flush that out. I am, I am at a point, based on these changes, willing to move forward with the project with a caveat and condition that that gets flushed out, we bring that final number back to this board. We can't expect that this one developer pay for all of it, but I think if we take a look and follow the same methodology that we did for the Luamp project at two-fifty and four-forty-one, with that same methodology, we identified a program of sharing costs, so that everyone participated for that. And I'd ask staff to take a look at that, we bring that component back, and, you know, with what that final breakdown would be, but that would definitely be a condition.
So your motion to move forward means what? To move forward.
Well, the next step, well, also with what Tony has mentioned about as the addition that we work on that, I mean, it's, right now, it's condition of use permit, site approval for apartment buildings at thirteen eighty-four Empire Boulevard.
So you're moving that table for further discussion?
No, no.
Moving to, I order moving to approvals.
Moving to approve the caveat that we continue this conversation and, serious conversation about the road improvement and D'Aniellis.
No, I would, I would say it's a condition of approval.
Yeah.
We just need to finalize the number based on, you know, that number could be, we heard fifty, but that number could be thirty-five, that could be fifty-five, it would be an equal share with the, with the property owners down in that area. So that, so that everyone, no one property either was advantaged or disadvantaged as a result of that, everyone, everyone participated.
Are you comfortable, Supervisor, with having that be a condition, and with, you know, moving for a condition without further discussion?
I, I would, I would be.
I'll second your motion.
Tony, what we would do is, we would contact the contractors that recently did the work on Empire Boulevard.
Right.
They extended the turning lane as long as they did up to Plank Road, ask them to give us an idea of what the cost of that would be, based on what we were given as parameters for the length of the turning lane.
Right.
Let them come back with a number that you could utilize to start breaking this down fairly to each of the developers. So I appreciate the fact that you've listened to our concerns about the public access to the waterway, to the shoreline, so I think that's something that you did not have to offer, and that was one of our earlier concerns, and obviously, that's been a concession that you're willing to make, along with everything listed up there, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's a motion on the table, and a second. I'll ask staff, is there, first I'll ask board, any other questions, comments, or input that you would like to provide at this point, that we haven't already discussed? I'd ask staff, staff, is there anything that, since the public hearing, August of two thousand and nineteen, and multiple work sessions that we've had, and discussion here tonight, is there anything additional that the board should be aware of that's not part of the record?
No, other than the fact that if you approve it, there's a lot of work to do yet. I mean, it's not that they turn around tomorrow and start building, we've got to get the plans signed up, there are ton of easements that have to be redesigned.
Yeah.
There's a lot of work that would have to be done.
Well, it's no different, it's no different than any other project that would come before this board or the planning board.
Correct.
That is, is that what has to happen is, is that all conditions have to be satisfied, all, all the, all the conditions of approval that are out there, whether that be easements, letters of credit, all those things have to be taken care of, maps have to be signed off, filed with the county, and all those types of things. So yes, I mean, I think it's a general understanding that shovel doesn't go in the ground tomorrow, or if it does, we'll have the opportunity to, you know, see what a stop work order looks like, so there is a proper lit process and what have you for that, so, all right. Anything else, staff? All right, anything additional, although you used up quite a bit of your time, anything that wasn't mentioned on the record that should be part of the record?
Yes, sir.
Okay, seeing, seeing none, motions on the table, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so let the record reflect that it was a four-on vote, and the matter is approved, subject to conditions, and Mr. Costello, Mr. Valentine, this board will be looking for draft resolution to be, to be reviewed. Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to everyone. All right, this was the last item that was before the board, and seeing no further business to come before the board, the December eleventh, two thousand and nineteen session of the town board work session will stand adjourned at eight forty-nine PM.